Who's got the pledge, Tim?
I don't know if I can twist.
There's somebody.
Commissioner Paul has it in the room.
Okay.
Commissioner Paul, do you want to do the pledge?
It's all you.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular commission meeting for Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett might be joining us later. Commissioner Carl Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
City manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We're going to start off with our invocation given by Pastor Timothy Green of Cottonwood Christian Fellowship, and then our pledge led by Commissioner Paul.
Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and open this meeting in prayer. We believe in prayer. We believe in the power of prayer. We believe that you hear and you answer prayer. We believe, Lord, as your word states, that you work and you govern in the affairs of men. And, Lord, we ask you to do that. We ask you to do that for our nation. We ask you to do that for our state. We ask you to do that for this city. Lord, I pray you for wisdom and blessings upon Mayor Payne and the other council people that are here who are governing this city. Just pray your blessings upon them. God, I pray a hedge of protection round about these new officers that are being sworn in tonight and the others on the force and our first responders. God, I just pray, Lord, that your will be done in each of our lives and we live our lives to bring glory and honor to your name. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See you Sunday. And now you know. Okay. We are going to start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
A second from Commissioner Paul. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero. And we are going to move on to our first presentation. Very excited about that. Welcome everybody. Swearing in of newly hired Alamo Gordo Police Department police officers, animal control officer, and the first ever Alamo Gordo Police Department police service aide, and deputy chief Kuna Harrow, who is not Chief Denton, will give us some information on that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners.
You have too much hair. That's what it is.
Too much hair. City manager. Obviously, thank you for the time today. I'd like to introduce our newest team members to you guys. We've got five new uncertified police officers. We've got one animal control officer, and we have our newly, our very first police service aide position. So if y'all would come up and I'll kind of introduce you. Pearson Villa, he's the new police service aide. You want to do it one at a time, Judge, or you want to do it all?
One time for better just different.
And we have Judge Overstreet. Welcome, sir.
Can you raise your hand for me?
Sir.
All right, you have to me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The law... The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
Discharge the duties of an Alamo Gordo police service aide.
Discharge the duties of an Alamo Gordo police service aide.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Commissioners, the next person I'll introduce is Robert McIntyre. He comes from us, he comes to us from Texas, and he's our new animal control officer.
Texas.
Raise your hand for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the law.
And I will faithfully and impartially according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Animal Control Division.
Animal Control Division.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome.
The first uncertified police officer, Gavin Johnson.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and according to the law.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Matthew Munganya.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the law.
And I will faithfully, impartially, according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Wyatt Timothy Skelton.
I appreciate it. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the law.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Estrella Brown.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the...
Laws of the state of New Mexico. The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinance...
Ordinances.
Ordinance. Mexicans, sorry. The city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Daniel Handy.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and according to the law.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and according to the law.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
Discharge the duties of the Alamo Gordo Police Department.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. And just to update commission, we've got five uncertified, we've got a total of six certific, uncertified officers. We're hoping to get to the academy in January. So the academy is sixteen weeks long, and so we hope if everything works out, we have them back on the streets in the May-June timeframe, working with us.
That's exciting.
It is.
I don't know about you guys, but I thought that was way cool. Very excited about this.
And earlier today, I attended a graduation. We had Officer Zek and Officer Jacazi.
I saw that.
They both graduated, so we'll get them on the streets in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Do you guys understand that? Seven new officers, seven, seven new officers? Welcome to Alamo Gordo. Welcome to Alamo Gordo Police Department. This mayor is very excited that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, yeah, we have to move on now, don't we? Okay. Let's move on. We will move on to item two. We have a presentation on tethered dogs inside yards, and we have Mr. John Hancock. If you'll just come up to the microphone and state your name for the record and...
Forrest Hancock.
Okay. It says John.
It does, but it's...
Is it really Forrest?
Yes, it is.
Did they get you mixed up with a signature? It does say John, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not that famous.
Well, I apologize for that, but welcome. Thank you, and you will have ten minutes.
I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me. I'm just going to read this. Okay. My purpose for being here today is to bring awareness of many creatures who have been forgotten, souls right here in our city. Maybe it is almost understandable that the city ordinance are not complied with, considering that Walker Town is off of the beaten path if you're not living there. I'm referring to Walker Street and the streets running perpendicularly off of Walker Street. There's a couple of ma and pa shops out there, but mostly is residential. I would not know of this situation if I did not live there myself. I cannot drive anywhere I need to go without traveling down Lindberg Avenue where I live to Walker Street. On my street alone, there are three residences with continuous chain-linked fences around the properties with dogs tied all the time to a stake, trailer hitch, or porch steps. This looks to me like the most severe punishment for an animal who has done nothing wrong. This is nothing short of torture for man's best friend. Dogs are known for their intelligence, loyalty, and lovable nature. They think, they remember, and they dream. There are more like us than some owners can recognize or appreciate. Consider this beautiful creature whose nature is to protect his boundary and his master's life with his very own. Now take that creature, put a rope or a chain around his neck, and isolate him out in the yard to an immovable object. His only option is to walk around the end of his rope to an endless circle. Day after day, his existence is that ditch. When it's cold or wet, so is he. All he knows is that he is separated from everything that might be considered a life worth living. He is trapped, vulnerable, and lonely forever. I live with four dogs and notice them when they sleep. Their feet move, and they make little sounds as they dream, and they're daily, as they relive what happens on a daily basis. Their lives get relived during a dream, just as we do. I can only imagine what a trained, a chained dog dreams about. Maybe to be allowed to run and play, or to talk to the other dogs in the neighborhood, or bark at a cat. I'll bet they dream of being loved and approved of. Most likely, though, they dream of someone like you, who would rescue them from the rope, if only you knew. Well, here we are. So let's talk about solutions. Why is this happening? Is the dog able to jump the fence because it is too low? Is the gate broken? What is the reason for this dog being treated this way? That is where we come in. In the fence, if the fence is too low, it can be raised. If the gate is broken, it can be fixed. The only detail is, is the only detail left is who will correct the problem and how. At any rate, the solution has to be simple. The problem involves, if the problem involves manual labor, I will volunteer my time and sweat to secure the boundary. I cannot believe there aren't others who wouldn't do the same if asked. It can be done. I would like to free every dog everywhere, but I know I cannot. But I live in Walker Town, and I will do what I can. There are city ordinances in place already, so let's consider what can be done legally. A police officer runs every license plate he encounters, checks the stickers, and basically looks for violations all the time. These violations cost citizens money. It is mostly about revenue, if we are to be honest. If the weeds get too high, the homeowner gets two choices, to cut the weeds or get fined. So the obvious solution to a broken city ordinance is to use the same method here. Ask the resident why he has a dog chained constantly in an enclosed yard, and the answer should be a good one. If not, give him the same options as any other violator, comply or pay. I am not a huge fan of fines, but we are not talking about a victimless crime here. We're talking about crimes against man's best friend. My point here is that this blatant cruelty must be stopped. Not everyone is the sort to let dogs become family members. But can we agree that such intelligent creatures as dogs should be, should not be treated this way? Can we at very least remove the rope and let him have shade on a hot day or a place to keep warm when needed, and get necessary exercises as every human and dog needs? Would it not be possible for nonviolent detainees, or I was told, trustees, to use their time for this person, purpose? I imagine the punitive option would be necessary at times, but I'll bet there are other options. Perhaps publicizing a particular address needing help would bring volunteers. Even city employees could help, considering this is a city violation. I'm not, I'm sure that there are other solutions I haven't thought of, but as a city, could we pull together to solve this? Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is anyone interested in, in maybe thinking this might be a problem that needs to be solved? I would ask Mr. McIntyre, but he left.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's our new, that's our new animal control officer.
Yeah.
This was a presentation, and it was, it's not a action item, so we really can't comment it on, comment on, comment on it right now. But I'm sure if the commissioners have any questions, they will reach out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to a public comment. I don't have anybody signed up. So with that, I'll move on to the city managers' report.
This is the third meeting we've had almost back-to-back, so I do not have anything new to report. This is the time of year where things slow down a little bit. We are finishing up, or actually, our contractor is finishing up with the scenic extension project. Manila Lake is still on track. Those projects are still moving forward. If I knew that all we needed to do was swear in city employees to fill the chambers, I think we'll have every city employee, new city employee now sign in. We are still, actually, today, the directors, managers, people that will be inputting our proposed budget for the next fiscal year, they were getting their marching orders from the finance, she here, yes, the finance director Evelyn Huff and her staff. So that is, we are in the beginning stages of preparing our proposed budget for the next fiscal year. I believe the next meeting, or the first meeting in January, finance will be coming before commission to get your all's input on how you would like to see the budget presented, same as last year, if you'd like to see anything additional, if you have any requested items to be potentially included in the, in the proposed budget. So that will be coming up in one of the next couple of meetings, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it. Alrighty. We will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything? Commissioner Reardon?
I was talking to the city manager the other day about this, but since we've got a newly elected representative that'll be taking office in January, and then a session coming up right after that, I would like to see if the city would draft a letter to our new representative, Senator Griggs and Senator Burton, and I think we've got a couple of other representatives around here that are partially this area, about the funding for the light at the first and the bypass, and then also the north and south overpasses. They need to start working on that. That south overpass has been that way since they finished it, and I'm, I think it was twenty years ago that they pretty much finished that. And then the north overpass is starting to do the same thing. It's, I don't know if you guys probably, some of us pull trailers with equipment over those, and, and, you know, one of these days, it's going to cause an accident because of the, the bump in it, so.
Yeah. Nope. I wholeheartedly agree with all of that.
Yeah. I just think if we could have staff draft a letter to, I guess it'd be Representative Block, Senator Griggs, and Senator Burt, and, because we'll have, I was going to say the session coming up, it'd be what, in Jan, late January, early February? So I don't know if this is a thirty-day or sixty-day session, but I think it's a thirty-day.
Sixty-day.
Is it a sixty? So maybe they'll have enough time to think about us down here and see if they can't help us out and get some of this stuff fixed up.
I agree. I'm expecting big things from our representatives, so hopefully they'll deliver.
And hopefully it's, hopefully it's not like the fix they just did for us on the bypass out there, so.
Yeah, and I would like to see that light, too. I know that's...
Yeah, it's...
I have to explain to people all the time that's a state issue, not a city issue, but that doesn't mean we can't, we can't argue for it, or fight for it, or advocate for it, so.
But we, we had the traffic study done, and it, it does, the state's study warrants a traffic light with the amount of vehicles that are going through that intersection. And I think we've had several fatal accidents at that, at that intersection, so.
Yes, I agree. Oh, sorry.
I could just ask for just a little, a little clarification on the, on the letter that will be going to the senators' representatives. Do you want this letter signed by me? Do you want this coming back to commission to be signed by the mayor? Do you want it signed by all seven of you?
I don't know. I think it's going to have the same amount of pull, no matter what, or probably, probably get rid and thrown in the trash, honestly, but we'll see. So it's whatever you guys think. I bet we just have the mayor, just have the mayor sign it.
Okay.
That way, it's simple and easy. She can sign it, shoot it off to him, and let these guys get to work. Hopefully, they'll work for us.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have something.
Yes, Commissioner McDonald.
I just wanted to thank P and M. I know Bruce is first name, but I don't know his last name.
Ashburn.
Ashburn. But I talked with a couple of the people that are on the P and M staff, and there was a broken street light, and they came out and they fixed it. And the reason why I'm saying something tonight is somebody, a resident constituent in that area noticed it, and he wanted to say thank you for fixing the light, because there had been wires dangling from it for some months. But I wanted to make mention that they did follow through and fix it. And the other thing that I wanted to mention, because I was there today, Corinth Baptist Church served over six hundred and fifty dinners in their annual Thanksgiving dinner tonight, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, because there were cars wrapped around a couple of blocks stopping by to pick up those plates, so that was a good thing. So I just wanted to mention that. Pastor Forney is the pastor at Corinth, and a lot of people are saying he's doing some good stuff in that neighborhood. So I want to say thank you.
So your comments just brought up something else that I needed to say. But also, I'd have to like to see staff, since we've got budget coming up, you know, next year, and they're working on it right now. But now that the scenic extension's almost completed, I would like to see them at least start putting together a plan, or maybe some cost estimates of what it's going to run to shoot fairgrounds through and, and/or Indian Wells. You know, I know we're kind of out of bartering chips with the railroad, but if we can kind of see, you know, maybe we could close the canal and move it over to Indian Wells, or get fairgrounds, if they can kind of get some preliminary numbers together of what that would cost us to, to work on those. I know there's some developments that may be going in in some of those areas that maybe it'll be beneficial to, to get it done, or at least look at it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just had one question. Maybe City Manager Brian might be able to answer. I had a business owner on Indian Wells call me earlier today about the construction that's going on over there, and I guess they're replacing some type of water lines. I don't know exactly what they're doing, but she was a little upset at how long the process has taken. I didn't know.
Okay. I think just down below College, I believe.
Yeah, just, yeah, just west of College.
So what had happened there, there was a fire hydrant. A business came in. I believe it's a doctor's office. I'm not quite sure. I've never been inside the building myself. Fire hydrant right next to the building, and the fire hydrant was leaking. Indian Wells is obviously one of our heavier-traveled, larger traffic, or heavier traffic on that roadway. So they did have to remove that hydrant. Obviously, we weren't going to put it back in place next to a building, because that's just a problem waiting to, or lawsuit waiting to happen for us. So the line, or the, sorry, the fire hydrant had to be moved down, down the road a little bit on those heavier-traveled roadways. We use the cement stabilized material, normally referred to as slurry. And we've had an issue getting material, and actually, this is something a local vendor provides for us. They should, I believe, the, both, both of the excavations have been, the slurry has been applied, and it has been fully backfilled. I'm not sure. We have also had an issue getting hot mix, not only for the city, but I've heard that's been an issue for quite a few of the contractors in the area. I can find out, and, yeah, she's not here tonight. I can find out in the morning and send it out to, send it out to commission when that will be paved.
Okay.
Once it's paved, we'll open it. If we go ahead and fill it all the way to the top and try and open it to traffic, that's going to create more of an issue than narrowing it down to the, the one lane.
One lane each way. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, if you can find out, just if they have an estimate, so I can relay something back to her, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah. I'll call in the morning and then send it out to the commission.
Cool. Awesome. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Who's that? Okay, a motion from Commissioner Paul. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Josh Roden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. We'll move on to item 10, consider an act upon the first publication of ordinance 1665, and it is a map amendment related to zoning, and I'll let City Planner Stella Rayel give us some information on that. I could read it, but I think everybody can read, I said I could read it, but I think everybody can read, we're good. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioner, City Manager, Seaver. Yes, this evening, I bring in front of you page V dash 2022 dash 00048. It is a, a request.
For a change, whoa.
For a change to our map amendment, or to our zoning map. I want to start off first by showing you this photograph that I took of the property we're going to discuss. This is located at 1004 Ninth Street. So, we can go back to that if you need to look at it more. The reason that I want, wanted you to see this is because I'm gonna talk a little bit about the parking in front of it. As you can see, there is no driveways on this property, so their parking, the property owners actually park behind, in the, off the alley. They've got quite a bit of property back there, so it's, vehicles are out of the alley, you know, there's no obstruction there. So I'm gonna go ahead and start off with this slideshow, please. Okay, so, we have property owners, Mr. and Mrs. William Perez, making this request this evening. So here, I'm showing you the, the zoning map in that area. 1004 is now C1 neighborhood business. Mr. and Mrs. Perez bought this property to live there. Mrs. Perez also has a business that she's had for a few years in different locations. She does facials is the type of business. I'm not quite sure what the name of the business is, though. So the request from Mr. and Mrs. Perez is to change the zoning from C1 neighborhood business to R4, multiple family dwelling. Everything in yellow that you see there is R4. Okay, so, here is an aerial map of the location. My little dot there is actually the rear of that property, where I was talking about all the parking that they have back there. So I sent out letters, this is a protest area, and I sent out letters to the surrounding property owners within 200 feet. There was a total of 14 letters mailed out, certified mail return receipt. As of today, I have received three letters undeliverable. I have not received any phone calls or letters of opposition for this request. The application was filed, and all fees were paid. Legal ad was placed in the Alamo Gordo Daily News. So at this time, I am open for questions, but I just wanted to mention about the parking. There is the dental place at the corner, and then there's another salon, and then Mr. and Mrs. Perez's property. There's a lot of traffic congestion in that area, and soon we'll be having, if you remember me bringing in front of you, the, the mobile home park right across the street. So, just wanted to mention that it gets pretty congested. But one of the reasons, or the main reason that Mr. and Mrs. Perez came in front of me to try and change the zoning of this is, Mr. Perez was doing quite a bit of construction, and unfortunately, he didn't have any permits to do that, so CID stopped him. CID also informed him that CID would not issue any building permits for him to continue the work as a homeowner, because it was in a business district. So they advised him, come in and see Stella and see about changing the zoning. So that's what brought all this on. Mr. and Mrs. Perez felt that it was a little more affordable if they changed the zoning versus trying to hire a licensed contractor to do all the work that they're, they're doing and planning to do. So I am open for any questions, if anybody has any.
Commissioner Reardon?
Why are they gonna go to R4?
R4, and, and that was my suggestion, because there is quite a bit of R4 surrounding that area, so I wouldn't create spot zoning. You have all that behind there, across the alley. Like I said, everything in that yellow is R4.
Okay, they're just gonna use it as a single-family dwelling with the whole business?
They're gonna live there. Their, their plan was to purchase that and use that as their retirement home, but still allow Mrs. Perez to continue her home-based occupation. Now, there's gonna be things that he's, they're gonna have to adhere to, besides the building permits. I mean, they're, they've done some work that's gonna need to be corrected. Mr. Perez has already cut down the fence. The fence was probably six foot tall, so he did cut down the front of it already to, to comply with our ordinances on height of fences, so, but like I said, I'm, I'm going to work with them and make sure that they follow all, all our ordinances and comply.
Anybody else?
I, I think I still have a little bit of concern about that, and I said, it's just the, the fact that it is gonna be congested, and I, I know that the city wants to be more business-friendly, and I agree with that. The only thing that I am concerned about is when the, the new development comes in for the small homes, is that that is going to take off more of the parking, because they're gonna have to do work on that area just to get it up to standard, to put that in. And then the fact that you have just the equipment that is gonna be used there, and I, like I said, I'm fine, as long as there's an understanding, because, like, I, I have been at the spa next door, and there has been a conflict with the owner next door. And I just wanted to make sure, like you said, you're gonna work with them, so they understand that there's about eight other, I, I think maybe anywhere from five to eight employees in that business next door, and I think they use the street parking also, not including the customers. And right now, the, the customer base is parking on the north side of the street also. So I just wanted to make sure that there was an understanding, and that there was not gonna be any problems going forward.
And I totally understand your concern, Commissioner McDonald. As far as 1005 Ninth Street, where the new development of the manufactured housing park is going to be, we worked very hard when I was working with that developer to make sure that they had ample parking within the park because of that parking issue along the street. Their entrance is going to be off of Hawaii, so hopefully that will take traffic away from Ninth Street. There's probably gonna be congestion, like you say, when they start working and using equipment and all that, but hopefully, it'll all work out. I am gonna have a conversation with Mr. and Mrs. Perez about the parking there along Ninth Street, and make them understand that that is public right-of-way, and anybody can park in front of their home. Normally, we, everybody can use, anybody can use public right-of-way for parking, as long as you don't block the resident or business entrance, the driveway. In this case, they don't have that. So if the salon next door, if their customers are parking right in front of their house, they have every right to. So I will have that conversation with the property owners and make sure that they understand, so there is not a conflict between business owners.
Unless the owner were to come in and get resident-only parking signs put in front of their home.
Yes, but there's restrict, there's regulations for that, so they've gotta be within so many feet of a gathering place, you know, school, church, and, so of course, Rachel would have to look at all that, and I don't, I don't see any in that area, just off the top of my head, 'cause I had that same thought, but they do have to meet those requirements.
I would think a business that has that much customers would be considered a gathering place, if it's, if it's an issue. But I still, not quite sure why we're going to R4, I mean, just so you don't spot zone. I'm just a little concerned, if they're gonna be single-family living there, why don't we just go to R1?
Because our, well, I have a little bit of R1, the next block, but R1, R1 in that area, I would, I would create spot zoning. And you can see, too, the, I'm not sure what street that is, I'm sorry, but, but there is an R4 that's already been approved, has been there for years, in between all that.
The yellow one by itself there?
Yeah, in between all that C1. No, that was done before my time.
Are there plans to make this a multi-family dwelling in the future?
No, it's just, it's just Mr. and Mrs. Perez that live there. It's just, they're trying, they're trying to get away from C1, because my conversation with the property owners, he said he cannot afford to hire a contractor to do the work.
You're allowed to build residential per R ordinances, I think you're allowed to build a residential structure on a commercial lot.
Yes, but CID considers it, it's, it's a neighborhood business, so they won't issue him any permits. He's already had that conversation with Chief Maysa. So that's the thing, is we're, we don't have any control over that.
I think in order to issue a resident parking only sign, wouldn't they have to come before the commission?
Yes, they do, yes. Like I said, they have to meet that requirement.
Problem solved.
If it's an issue, then, you know, they could actually do that if they're residing there as a resident.
Well, and, and Rachel is, is the one that reviews all those, and I don't wanna speak out of place, and I, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but they have ample parking in the rear. That's where all their designated parking is. That's where it has been for years. So I'm sure that would be something that would be taken into consideration.
And those buildings are so close together, issuing a resident parking only sign for something like that is almost, I mean, I know it can be done, but I'm familiar with that salon next door also, and it's just, they're right there. There's no, you, and, and the salon next door, the, the, the building is small enough, you maybe could park two cars in front of it, so they have to be able to park on the, I mean, it's just not very big, so.
And the dental office has all their parking in the rear also, their designated parking.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have one question. So with it being R4, they sell the property down the road, somebody else could theoretically come in and build another structure in the back. I don't know what else is there currently, to make it multi.
They would not be able to build another structure, because they would not meet the setback requirement, so that would not be approved by my department. There's no room, there's no way that would happen.
Okay.
Makes sense. Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item?
It's item nine.
Yeah, it's item nine.
You know, that's what I thought. I was looking at the agenda on our screen here, and I'm like.
It skips from eight to 10, so.
We missed item nine somewhere. Okay.
Let's make a motion to approve ordinance 16.
It's gotta be that new math. Just saying.
I'll just make a motion to approve ordinance 1665 for first publication.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Josh Roden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. And we're gonna say that's item nine. So we're gonna move on to item 10, consider an act upon resolution 2022 dash 48 concerning release of liens. Ashley Smith?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I'm asking you to consider an act upon resolution 2022 48 authorizing the release of liens that are outside the four-year statute of limitations. There are 24 liens that are past the four-year deadline, with a total of $34,616.01. And I'm open for questions.
Is the 24,000 item, is that for demolition of blight?
So, that's the property that's on Rockwood. Actually, that's a small portion of the, of the demolition of that property. I believe that was only the asbestos abatement portion, but we have foreclosed, or that's the remainder of the lien on that property. The city has foreclosed on that property, and that property has been sold already on the courthouse steps. And the person that's listed, Sailor, I believe, is the name, she, many years ago, passed away, so this is not something the city would ever be able to collect on.
Yeah. That's the infamous Rockwood House.
That's the, yes, that is the Rockwood House.
And it needed to go?
Yes.
Badly? Yeah. Yeah, she's passed away, there's nothing you can do about it.
Would like to add, so this, you, you will see another small batch come before you at one of the future commission meetings to release, to release liens, but in the legal department, Ashley, her staff, there are quite a number of these outstanding liens that are going to be filed in court, and we are moving forward with collecting those debts. They're starting, obviously, with the oldest ones. These are just outside the, outside the timeframe. There are going to be a few others that we will not meet the deadline on, but going forward, it's our intention to, well, obviously, start with the oldest, and either collect on those outstanding liens, or foreclose on the properties those liens are against.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Got one quick one. On these liens here, do we know, like the ones for water, are they water bills that were accrued, or that were, that were from a renter? That just, this goes with the property rather than with the renter? Because I, I have a little bit of an issue. I had a conversation with Brian about this, I think, this morning. If it's a renter that stiffed a landlord with a water bill, I really don't wanna see us go after him or her and foreclose on their property over a water bill that they did not sign up for.
So the, excuse me, so these obviously are the ones that we're asking to be forgiven?
Yes.
Going forward, that is a discussion prior to, to the discussion we had earlier today?
I think it was today. It was yesterday or today.
Yesterday or today. We've had that conversation with, with the legal department. They are closely working with, with water billing, so that if in the past, there was a property that was, like you were describing, that was a rental property, and there was a period of time before the ordinance was changed multiple times, where that could have happened, but that is so far in the past, that those liens should have been forgiven. Notices have gone out prior to actually, Ashley, starting with the city, to the, to these, to the people that have the outstanding liens, to, to try and collect, and we did collect quite, quite, quite a number of the, of the past due amounts. But they will be verifying with water, with water billing, what we have. But they will be verifying with water, with water billing, what we have in our system to try and prevent that from happening. The property owner will get a notice from, from the, I believe, you might want to explain that portion, 'cause that's giving you the legal side.
So, after we start the foreclosure process, which, we file a complaint in district court. Once we file that complaint, we then, the court issues a summons. We send to the property owners, we send them the complaint that we filed and the summons. And all that gets done within five days after filing the complaint. So, they will have notice, and then they have six weeks to respond, to either come to the legal department, you know, work something out where they're gonna pay us, or if no one responds, then we go before the district court, and they will, you know, make their ruling, one way or another, whether they grant us the foreclosure or not.
I don't know how the rest of y'all feel on that, but I'd almost like to see that list before we file those foreclosures, just to see, and then if you guys could have a descri, I know it sounds a little bit like micromanaging, but, you know, and, and see if it's weeds or water, or what it is, and, you know what I mean? I, I really don't want to take somebody's home over $700, or $600, or $300, whatever it may be. Majority of these are, what, 200, $200 to $400?
Well, that's why the notices have gone out, and this is after they've been dealt multiple times, have been sent to collections, have received quite a bit of correspondence from the city. This would be their last correspondence, or they go before, or they go before the judge.
Do we have certified letters with return receipt to prove that they actually received that information?
Yes, we do send several notices that are certified mail, when, like I said, when my department, so, the way it goes is, we get told that, hey, we have these liens, or that we need to put liens on these properties, right? We then actually sit on these liens. Right now, we've been sitting for over four years, which is why my department, we're trying to go through the backlog right now. But, when it's close to that four-year, or, you know, in the future, we're hoping for about a year, when I do the process of foreclosure, that also has to be certified mail. So that's another step, there'll be certified mail. I know finance does all the, a lot of their stuff for certified mail. So we do have multiple certified mail letters.
And, I'm sorry, do we, we still have a remedy for the landlords, right? They can sign, do we still have the paper they can sign, and?
Yes, we still have the waiver, yes.
Yeah, so they, they can sign a wa, I know, I know, but they can sign a waiver.
Like I say, when you're in that business, and you have multiple rentals.
I get it.
It makes you, you know, I have a rental, Nick over there has a rental, okay, I have a waiver. My water bill for that customer to move in there is gonna be considerably higher than his, who doesn't have a waiver, so it gives.
Well, it's $50 more.
I don't remember what, well, it used to be more than that.
I do this all day long. It's 170, the deposit is 170, to sign up. I believe it's 170, and I think it's 210, or it used to be 210, if they signed the waiver, or 220, or something like that. There's really not a huge difference.
Still $50 is $50.
I, I understand that, but I think in order for the landlord to protect themselves, they can't be concerned about the, you know, especially now. You can't even find a rental now. I don't think people are gonna complain about paying an extra $50, so, I'm just.
Like I say, I just, I don't want the city government taking people's homes over $400 to $500.
And those, those people that, whether it's for water, it's for weeds, it's for whatever the lien was placed for, they have the final opportunity to come into the city and either make their case. Were you raising your, go ahead.
Sorry, additionally, I should say, even after we do the foreclosure, if the judge grants us, you know, that property, the property owner actually still has, according to the state, at least three months to actually get the property back, even after we sell it, technically. So there's a lot of opportunity, if someone wishes.
Yeah, like I say, I know these, we gotta write off, or whatever, 'cause it's over the four years, but I just think on those future ones that you're bringing, you know, you gotta look at it from our standpoint as well. I mean, I know we gotta do what's right for the city, but we also gotta do what's right for those people that vote us into office and not take their homes over 300 bucks, you know, so, but.
I, I get it.
You know what I mean?
I do, I own multiple properties too, I understand, but.
We're the government, we're not.
I know.
Gestapo, you know?
But what is the, and, and this is a serious question, like, what is the solution? Is the solution for us to write off? Okay, so this would only be $10,000 if it wasn't for this big one, but, which, I would like to point out, is considerably less than what we've seen in the past, so, kudos to you guys for that. But, what is the solution? I don't.
I don't know.
We can't keep doing, you know, $10,000 here and $10,000 there, because people have received letters, they've received notices, this has gone on for close to four years, and they've done nothing. And the reason they do nothing is because they don't think we're serious. So what is the solution?
I don't know, but, not, I'm not gonna be in favor of voting to take somebody's home over $300.
I'm not either, but I don't think it'll come to that.
Never know, but.
I, I don't think it'll come to that. I think, I, I will tell you that if I was a homeowner in this situation, and I went, wait a minute, you're gonna foreclose on my house over $200, I'd just pay the $200.
Well, I would too, but.
'Cause that's the cost of doing business, so, and then the next time, I'd sign the waiver, and somebody will rent the house.
If this is a water bill, like, I had this conversation with him this morning, is, if it's PNM or Mexico Gas, that bill goes with the person that signs on the dotted line. It doesn't go with the person that owns the property. We are the only ones that do that, the city of Alamo Gordo is, so. But anyway, this is a discussion for down the road when we, when we talk about this, so. Everybody else doesn't have any discussion, I'll just make a motion to approve resolution 2022-48.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Rood, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Josh Rooden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. We're gonna move on to item 11, formerly known as 12. Consider an act upon canceling the December 20, 2002 regular commission meeting and city manager.
Oh, this one's mine.
It's yours. Unless you'd like me to talk about it.
This is, obviously, the meeting right before the, the Christmas holiday. Traditionally, this is a time that we don't see as many bid awards, et cetera. We put those off to the new fiscal year, it's very difficult to get, when we do have the projects going out, to solicit those bids, et cetera. We think that this meeting can be canceled. If not, we can all come, come together on the 20th and do the invocation, the pledge. You can approve the minutes from the last meeting and adjourn the meeting.
Anybody have any comment?
Just approve, just to approve item 12, or a motion to approve item 12, sorry.
11.
Oh, item 11, sorry, I'm reading it off the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Rood, and do I have a second?
Second.
I was. That was quick. I have a second and a third, no, I'm just kidding, I have a second from Commissioner Melton. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And we will cancel the December 20th meeting, and enjoy the holidays. Okay, we'll move on to the last item, item 12. It's appointments to boards and committees. We have an airport advisory board. We have one upcoming vacancy, and I'm gonna assume that's to the expiring term of Mr. Jeff Raven, and one application received from Mr. Raven, and if reappointed, this would be his eighth term. Does anybody have any objections? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and appoint him to that. We also have three vacancies on the airport zoning board, no applications, and three current vacancies on the senior volunteer program advisory council, and we have no applications. If nobody has anything else, I would just like to tell everybody, since we won't see each other, happy Thanksgiving to all of you and to our city staff, and I would just personally like to say thank you guys for all you have done. It was very cool to see all those new officers tonight. It looks like what we're doing is working, and so thank you guys for all you do. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So it moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Rood, and I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And, motion passes 6-0, we are adjourned.